Folks, I'd like to call to order the April 1st, 2020 Select Board Meeting. Tonight, we're trying a new format for our Select Board Meeting. That's going to both model and exhibit proper social distancing, yet allows board members and presenters to communicate with each other, and for the public to be able to watch and listen to the meeting through our regular channels. We're broadcasting live on RCTV channels, Verizon Channel 33, Xfinity Channel 22. You can also connect to see this meeting from a link at the rctv.org website for Facebook Live as well as YouTube. Thanks to Phil Rushworth at RCTV for working with us to allow for live broadcasts of an all-virtual video conference meeting. This is our first go with this. We appreciate your patience as well as suggestions on how we can improve this in the future. So folks, it's time for us all to take a deep breath again and address our most immediate priorities: the safety and security of our neighbors and ourselves, and how to navigate as a town through the COVID-19 pandemic. Our main mission tonight is to share with residents about town operations and response, and how residents can find resources that they may need during the pandemic. The town is open for business, but through different methods of communication. Town Manager Bob LaShure and then I will lead us through a discussion of this. The Board will also discuss formally declaring a state of emergency in the town, vote on some Board of Health matters, vote on some state legislative matters, vote on insurance payment, and discuss topics for our next meetings, the next of which is scheduled for April 14th, 2020. We will allow for public comment submitted by email to selectboard@ci.rudding.mus for topics that are on the agenda. Our goal will be to clarify about issues or answer questions about any of the agenda items. Other issues will be deferred, and staff or the Board will respond as quickly as possible after the meeting. All emails received by the full Board become part of the public record. Though the agenda called for public comment before we take some important votes, I'm going to ask the Board to allow us to move public comment toward the end of the meeting tonight, with the goal that many of the issues we'll be discussing this evening will be covered before that time, and then public comment can follow. Okay, here virtually, we have many members of the Command Team participating, and Town Manager Bob LaShure will introduce the structure and key individuals who may offer some comments. We'll allow them to speak first this evening so that they can return to their duties or well-deserved rest. These leaders and their staffs are keeping us safe and secure in these unsettling times, and they deserve our strong praise for their work on our behalf. One quick housekeeping note to the folks that will be speaking: please unmute yourself when you speak, and then after you speak, please return to mute. With that, I'll turn it over to Bob to discuss the town operations and response. And Bob, you're all set, you're unmuted, please, take it away.
Thank you, Mark. Do you want to show the slides?
Yep, give me just one second, please.
First of all, I'd like to thank many members of the community, certainly all the staff and the volunteer boards. These are unusual circumstances, and I think the community is generally doing pretty well. We'll have some suggestions later for some areas of improvement, though. We first met in the last week of January to discuss the COVID-19 issue, which at that point was entirely in China. And we started our prep work. About a month ago, we introduced a more formal stance. We used what's called the Incident Command System, or ICS. That's something that's used by every level of government in the country. We all have, or most of us have significant training in it. The structure of a given ICS for an incident can vary depending on several factors. This one was clearly a long-term incident and a very large and broad incident. So we use something called Unified Command. A group of people there in Unified Command develop the incident goals, objectives, strategy, and approve all actions and communication. We have received numbers of requests for approving communications. That seems like the busiest thing we do. We have a liaison officer who is in charge of public correspondence inbound, if you will. We have a public information officer which provides information to the public on an outbound basis. Very importantly, we have a very large and key planning section which produces what's called an Incident Action Plan. That's how to accomplish the goals that command hands down. We have an operations section which carries out the Incident Action Plan. It identifies and assigns resources and assists with strategy. And then a couple of smaller sections: a logistics section that does the ordering and helps develop some plans as to what's practical; and a finance section that develops cost estimates, ensures that we have the funds available, does the procurement, and pays the bills. This group is a total of about 25 town, school, and RMLD folks working together, as we've been trained to do for many, many years. As a sample, on the next slide, we have some command goals that were developed in March 16th, just to pick one date. There were seven specific goals, and then daily issues as they arise. All goals were complete, some in a day or two, some took a week. But that just gives you a flavor of what a set of goals would be. This command group is meeting, it was meeting daily for a while. I think we're down about three times a week now, and we'll meet as needed. Specifically, the staffing of these groups: Greg Burns as the Fire Chief and the Emergency Management Director, Emmy Dove, the Chair of the Board of Health, who has done heroic work as a volunteer especially, thank you Emmy, Dave Clark, our Police Chief, John Doherty, our Superintendent, and myself, Town Manager. This is a group that's meeting again now several times a week, but not daily. Matt Cronellis is the Liaison Officer, so he's gathering all the inbound communication. We'll have more on that later. Jane Wellman is the Public Information Officer, she does the outbound work. Jane has been doing a great job designing the website and adapting as things change. Fire Captain Rick Nelson was... The operations section and the planning section are both headed up by Fire Assistant Chief Paul Jackson. And then the smaller logistics sections and finance and administrative section, Sharon Angstam is the section chief. So with the Chair's permission, I'd like to turn that over now to other members of the Command Staff for their comments.
Yes, please. Bob, do you have a preferred order of operations in terms of who will speak first?
I think in the order of the slide, Greg, Emmy, Dave, John.
Greg, please unmute yourself, and away you go.
Thank you. So we put together a Unified Command Structure to look at what the town response should be to this incident. And we chose people from the different departments that are impacted. And then we assigned people to planning, which is really a key aspect of it, is developing the plans on how we're going to respond to this incident. And then operations on how we're actually going to carry out those plans. And logistics and how we're going to get supplies and finance and how we're going to pay for it. And the other thing that's really important about this incident is getting the right communications out to the public. This incident is changing so quickly that it's important to get the right message out. The other thing that's important is we were in pretty good shape to begin with because all the town departments and the school department had continuity of operations plans. So they knew what their key functions were, how long they could go without providing some of those functions. And then we adapted it for this incident by looking at those key functions and what functions could be done remotely, so we could keep providing service to the community. So the work that we did in prior years really helped us for this incident. Thank you.
Thanks, Greg. We shift over to Emmy, please.
So, let's start with the good news.
Can you please introduce yourself first, Emmy, to everybody?
My name is Emmy Dove, I'm the Chair of the Board of Health. So, the Board of Health has actually met 18 times since March 10th. And a couple of us have had many additional meetings with town officials on top of that. I'm not going to go over the detailed minutia of every decision or order we've made, but I'll give a general summary. We closed town buildings to public access as well as allowing certain processes that were typically done on a walk-in basis to move to an electronic or telephone-based system. We have been in communication with the food pantry, the local clergy, and local businesses on best operating procedures. We have closed town playgrounds and athletic courts, fields, and complexes. In advance of the Governor's orders, we ordered the closure of personal care services businesses, like hair salons or nail salons, and began to restrict the use of reusable bags. Just this morning, we voted to temporarily ban door-to-door solicitation and canvassing and to declare a state of emergency for the town of Reading. Our health agent Laura Blasick has been guiding the Board on relevant issues to consider, which has been a great help. It is the intention of the Board of Health to focus our future efforts on educational outreach. I know there's a plethora of information out there, but the hope is that folks will be receptive to hearing from members of our own community. We are all working long hours, some of us as volunteers, to try to protect our residents to the best of our ability. And I will say, it feels very disrespectful for folks to blatantly ignore some of our orders. The closer we get to achieving total compliance of the Governor's orders and our Board of Health's orders for a solid three to four weeks, the sooner our small businesses will be able to open again and the sooner we'll be to returning to a sense of normalcy. Remember that the data you see today actually reflects our actions from one to two weeks ago, perhaps even three weeks ago, depending on testing turnaround. Now for the difficult news. So, we've been relying on a public health nurse from Malden to do all outreach to positive cases, including contact tracing. I just received a message from her this evening that she is swamped and will be spending the next several days... ...no longer be able to work Reading cases after that. We do have a new in-house part-time nurse who started last week, but she's currently awaiting access or approval before she can get training on the state reporting software known as Maven. So this means that we don't have any nurse currently with Maven access between tomorrow and the time our new nurse is trained. We, being the Board of Health and health agent, had received an offer from our previous nurse to come back for the pandemic, but we were told there was an HR issue with that. We received an offer from the state to use students for contact tracing, but we're told there was a policy issue and we couldn't take unpaid student interns. This area is really currently my greatest concern as contact tracing and monitoring is possibly our most critical function and incredibly time-consuming. And we currently have nobody who's qualified to do it for a short period of time, anyway. Given the scope of this, the future scope of this, I think it's critical that we add at least one more nurse full-time who is experienced in Maven as soon as humanly possible. That's all I have.
No, thank you very much. Barbara Jean, do you want to comment a little bit on what we might be able to do?
Can you hear me, Mark?
Yes.
Well, as Emmy mentioned, we just received this news about 10 minutes ago, so it's difficult to have an answer. I don't think, I don't know of any hurdles why our new public health nurse can't be trained or hasn't been trained. We'll certainly look to find that out. She's eminently qualified, so that's not the issue. One of the issues we are seeing kind of organizationally is the difficulty in hiring any new people now because some of the medical tests that we require of new employees just are not available. So there's some, there are some bottlenecks for hiring people right now, and we're working, trying to work as best we can with Labor Council on that. But this, you know, again, this is news tonight. There's no reason our public health nurse that exists shouldn't be ready as soon as humanly possible.
If I could, I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Yeah. So we did, I did get an update from the new, our new nurse today that all the paperwork's been filed, and the state confirmed that they have everything from her. So she will be in the office tomorrow, as will myself and the health agent. I think Laura's on the line. And we'll have a better picture tomorrow on when the training will take place. I don't think it's an involved step. It's just a matter of the state catching up to the application from the nurse. And once she has a password, I think she's ready to go.
And I'll add that Jean has reached out, and Woburn's public health nurse is available, which we'll now need to use.
So we'll have some access to Woburn. Great, Vanessa, do you have a comment?
I did, thanks, Max, it's Vanessa Salvarado from the Board. Emmy, you mentioned an HR issue with potentially bringing the former health nurse back. Bob, I know that HR issues are always delicate, but given the circumstances, is there a reason, administrative or otherwise, that we can't bring her back on a temporary basis? I know you mentioned the testing. Can that be suspended? Is it required, given that she was a former employee already, and recently, if I recall?
For tonight, I have no response to that question, Vanessa.
So I think what we probably should do here is move on, but I guess can we make the request that this obviously is one of the most important issues we have facing the town now? And whatever you folks are able to do to get us the resources we need at this point, I think that's very important. If that's all right, can we move on to Dave Clark, please, Chief Clark?
Hi, Mark, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so Chief Clark, everyone. First off, we've been working very closely, Chief Burns, with the operations. I'm not going to go into it anymore, I know he's covered it and it's in the packet. Basically, I wanted to assure the town that we're here, we're out on the road, the town is safe, if you need us, we will be there. We've modified how we do things. We, for instance, we're... We're taking most reports over the phone. We have officers separated in the station that are taking phone calls and taking phone reports. We have supplemented the patrol force with our school resource officers and our traffic and safety officer to add more cruisers, more officers out on the road. But I can assure you, if you need us, we will be here. We're here for you, we're staff, we're good to go. And I just want to assure the residents of the town that we're going to continue to operate just in a slightly different manner. It's different for us, we've been a very community policing-oriented department, and for us to kind of keep a distance and stay away from people, just, it's not a lack of concern, it's not a lack of understanding, but we're just trying to keep our distance, keep you safe and us safe. Early on, what we did, one of the first things we did was isolate dispatch. Dispatch is obviously crucial for police and fire. We've isolated that early on, and we've asked people to stay out of the police station as much as possible. And we have gone on with virtual roll calls, keeping the officers out, keep the officers separate as much as we can. We're here for you, we will continue to be here for you. Like I said, we've just modified our approach to things, and we're just thankful for the public. And I just wanted to reassure that we are here. And we are getting a lot of tips about us trying to force social distancing at the playgrounds, at the parks. Just, I ask the public to work with us, talk to your kids. We need some help in this way, we can't be sitting at every park, we can't sit at every playground enforcing this. We are driving by, we're moving people along when we can, but we still have to be there patrolling the street, and calls are still out there. We're still getting emergency calls, we're still getting car crashes, and we're still having domestic disputes, and we're still having theft and some marsonies. So we are out there doing the best we can in forcing it, but we're asking the parents to kind of really help out with talking to the kids and explaining to the kids, and just the parents helping us enforce, like we always talk about, it takes a village. We're going to need the Village of Reading to help us kind of keep the social distancing. We're doing the best we can, but we still have to respond to emergency calls. And I just like, again, just want to form, we are here. If you call 911, we're going to come.
Thanks very much, Chief. Next on the list is Superintendent John Doherty. John, can you unmute yourself, please?
Thank you, Mark. So like the rest of the team, we've been part of the Incident Command System. And the advantage to that, obviously, is that we're able to share communication and resources from the school side, which, and back and forth, which I think has been extremely helpful during this entire crisis. Very similar to the municipal, we also have a continuity of operations that we have set up. Essentially, we are building right now a virtual school for our 4,300 students, and that has been happening over the last three weeks. We are going to go into a lot of detail at our school committee meeting on Monday night, which we will be sending some information out tomorrow. But essentially, we have divided up several different areas among our five central office administrators and several directors. So that includes our Chief Financial Officer, Gail Dowd, Assistant Superintendent Chris Kelly, Director of Student Services, Jen Steyce, Human Resources Administrator, Jen Allett, and then obviously, each building principal has been overseeing, working with their staff. One of the critical areas right now that we are trying to do is trying to make sure that our students have access to meals and technology. And that, we've been working very closely with the town with that, but Gail Dowd has been spearheading that for the schools. So I'm going to give her an opportunity to give a little bit of an update on that.
Yeah, please.
Right, thank you. As John just mentioned, one of our first priorities has been connecting with all of the families. And it's a multi-phased approach. We're doing touchpoints, but we're also checking in on them to see if there's anything that they need. We're looking at sort of the social, emotional, as well as other needs. So to date, we are currently preparing grab-and-go lunches for about 25 students. Our Food Services Director has been amazing. She is actually preparing weekly packets, and for the most part, she is distributing them to the homes. We are, the list has been growing each day. I have to give a shout out to Carrie, who I think is also on the call. We've been connecting with her daily as well to make sure any needs we're hearing from the school community, we're passing it along to the town. So Chief Burns and his team have been phenomenal as well to make sure that all of the avenues are open. We also have been working very closely to deploy... ...technology now that we're going to remote learning, teaching, say that wrong, into phase two of this. We've deployed about 50 laptops to date. We're also deploying iPads as well as other assistive technology to our students as well. So it's been a very busy couple of weeks.
Thanks, Gail. John, do you have a little bit more as well?
No, that's it. We will be giving a much more in-depth report on Monday night.
Great, at the school committee meeting?
Yes.
Yes, great, great, thank you. Bob, do we want to bring it back to you? There are others that you would like to have speak now? So you have to unmute yourself first.
There we go. I'm going to describe now as quickly as I can what the town operations are and are not. It'll take a few minutes, we have a lot to get through. In terms of Town Hall, the vast majority of the work is continuing. If I were to guess, it's about 85%, but the public interaction has very much changed. We have a significant amount of staff that work remotely. Some work maybe three days a week remotely and one day in Town Hall, it varies. The Town Manager Office, we have three folks in it, and usually there's one of us here, but not usually more than one. HR, most of the staff is working remotely. As I mentioned, the hiring process has a bit of a bottleneck right now. Technology has been phenomenal, they've been working 24 hours a day to suddenly change all the way all of our services were offered. Operations, which is really important right now, its procurement and communications have also been doing great work. The Town Clerk's Office is staffed with one person four days a week as a minimum, so they're handling business just as they normally would, although, again, in a different format. Permits and inspections are a little bit different. If I might answer one of the questions that came in just a few minutes ago about night meetings guidance. Our staff, Julie Mercy or others, are working with Town Council on protocols for land use boards. The final draft to be released really depends on legislation that we do expect to be completed and signed this week. So we'll have much more guidance for a lot of your volunteer boards as soon as that legislation comes out. For permits, pretty much all of our services are still offered, it's just telephone and electronic. Economic development, Erin is on the call, she may speak later. She's been very, very busy, and she shifted to a support of local businesses, which is obviously really important. Elder Human Services and Health have certainly been very interwoven to this. Pleasant Street Center's closed, but you'll hear from them later. They've been working very hard and collaboratively with a number of agencies in town. And again, the Health Division is quite busy. Payroll upstairs, and the bills still need to be paid, are working remotely, but they have to come in about once a week. On the next slide, public safety, as you just heard from both chiefs, they're fully staffed. The remote support staff, rather, is working remotely. All three agencies are exceptionally busy. They've done their best to discontinue public access. Thanks to the Board of Health for some of that. Compost is now open, it's free, there's no compost stickers required. But I want to emphasize something that Dave said. The Police Department in Reading is not staffed to monitor the parks and the town forest. They have actually been urged by the Command Team to minimize personal contact with the public for the safety of all involved. We do have positive cases in the department, so we want to be really careful. They are, they have all engaged in very careful work patterns so that if one of them does test positive, to backtrace their exposure is now very simple. It's a simple enough example is, for instance, certain police officers now share one car, where police officers used to jump into the nearest car available to start a shift, and now it's all very carefully done. For public works, on the next slide, the staff is on a rotational basis. There's a limited amount of remote work that can be done. There's one employee maximum, back one slide, Mark, thank you.
Sorry.
One employee maximum per truck. Typically, there had been two and even three. The only change in rubbish and recycling is that the private textile company stopped its pickup, so those are the pink bags that we just started. Engineering staff is coming in every other day. As you can see, the Governor has allowed construction projects to continue, so our DPW engineers in the permitting area upstairs are very busy. Even though the parks are closed, the parks and forestry work is mostly continuing. Highway and equipment is also... Have stopped doing some local projects, especially sidewalk. The maintenance is very busy servicing vehicles. Clearly, all the water and sewer work is continuing as it has. The DPW garage is closed to the public, so there are no drop-offs. We'll announce to the public when that'll change, but as of right now, it will not be before May 4th, per the Governor's orders. We have no recycled bin or sticker distribution or water conservation devices available. And again, that'll also be at least a May 4th date. Next slide, thanks, Mark. Public Library, there's only a couple of employees in the building at a time. All circulation of materials are suspended. They're continuing their virtual services and adding on to them. The trustees are reviewing a library work plan, and Amy and John are here tonight if there's any questions. Facilities Department is fully staffed. There's some rotation going on with school custodians where buildings are closed. But as you can imagine, there's extensive cleaning efforts. We have a contractor as well as our staff pretty much working on the 24-hour buildings most significantly. All staff is working and observing social distancing. At this point, if Colleen would like to add anything for RMLD?
Hi, good evening. So I am on the incident team in the planning group, and that's been excellent in helping the town. The RMLD team is still maintaining full electric and business continuity at this time to provide safe and reliable service to the town of Reading, North Reading, Wilmington, and Lynnfield Center. The RMLD understands that electricity is an essential staple of life and is, during these unprecedented times, a life force to hospitals and other first responder emergency facilities, education, work capabilities at home, fresh food, water, and helping to find a cure. As this virus unfolds, the RMLD will, with its operational staff complemented by outside contractors as backup resources, work to ensure that any outages, issues are responded to with the customer service excellence that you are accustomed to. The RMLD is taking every precaution to ensure the safety of its workers, the public, and the RMLD assets. While our business office remains closed, our control room is available 24/7 to accept your calls, as always, if you have any electric-related issues. Our operations crews and system engineering have been split into Team A and Team B with remote physical separation within the service territory to ensure coverage redundancy. Our customer service and business staff is remote work from home with technology to continue all the services. The RMLD recognizes the power of the community, and together we will endure and ensure that your essential supply of electric service is safe and reliable. For the customers who are experiencing financial hardship due to the COVID, we realize that these customers have been financially impacted by the ongoing public health crisis. While the RMLD does not have the authority under the filed rate doctrine to discount charges, we can support our customers with financial hardships with payment... charges, we can support our customers with financial hardships with payment plans. I've put all of this up on the website tonight. So if you are having difficulty paying some or all of your RMLD bill, please contact Customer Service, 781-942-6598. Again, I've put that up on the website and discuss a payment arrangement as soon as possible. Electric bills will continue to be processed during this period, so it's important to continue to make payments if you are able to avoid a large account balance in the future. Residential monthly bills are likely to be higher than normal as increased remote work and education is being done at home and we just want customers to be mindful of that. As always, the safety of our employees and the public is RMLD's top priority. Please be assured that the RMLD is committed to continue to provide safe and reliable service to our customers through this unprecedented time and beyond. If you want to go on the website, please refer to remote bill payments. We have pay online, pay by phone, drop boxes that are located at 230 Ash Street here, Redding Town Hall at 16 Lowell Street, New England Beverage at 158 Main Street in North Redding, Alu Cheese Supermarket at 223 Lowell Street in Wilmington, or as always, by mail. The contact information also on the website for outages and emergencies is 781-942-6598. Again, it's on the website and they're there 24/7. There's also a number listed for general inquiries. So please visit our website and if you have any questions, please feel free to reach out to me, email or phone call. And I wish everyone Thank you.
Thanks, Colleen. Bob, do you want to, are there others that you'd want to have speaker or should I move on to the next slide? Oh, you're muted still. Sorry, let's, I got you.
I think the next slide, thanks, Mark.
Okay.
If anyone's following the agenda, we're now moving on to resources to get information and help under an early section. This is a slide that we'll certainly make available. It's, it's on the website, but we'll make it a little clearer. Looking at the website itself, www.reddingma.gov, as Mark had a nice promo for this meeting. The red banner at the top, which you can see on the bottom page here, has quite a bit of information. There's a lot of resources listed on that, on that banner. Specifically, two ways that folks can get in touch with us specifically for this incident. If you need help with human and elder service concerns, that will be Kevin Bowmiller and Carrie Valley. There's an email address for this called covid19, C-O-V-I-D-19-help@ci.redding.ma.us. All of our emails end with that. If you are willing to help, and I know there's a lot of organizations in town that have organized themselves, which we appreciate, that's covid-19volunteer@ci.redding.ma.us. Matt and Jane will deal with that, the inbound and outbound communications folks. If there are general questions, send them to Matt and myself at covid-19@ci.redding.ma.us. Some of these addresses are, have been up for a few days. We publicized them on the website. I expect more publicity we'll get for better usage, but there's only been two or three questions so far. Importantly, for those folks that don't have technology or don't prefer to use technology, we do offer telephone service and we've tested it out. It works fine. 781-942-6680 is a new general number for this specific incident. Please leave your name and phone number when you call. There are a menu of options that you can choose from, but if you don't choose from them, please at least leave your name and number. If you hit number one, that's for non-urgent help. That would be similar to asking a general question above. Number two, if you're willing to volunteer, again, that would be similar to the email above. And if you have a general, non-urgent question, that's similar to an email address above. Number four, we've got a few of these so far to subscribe to our Code Red Alert system. We sent a message out yesterday. It's our first one. It's unclear how often we'll do this. We think if people just keep an eye on the red banner on the website or use that telephone, phone number, they'll be able to keep up, but we'll certainly use communications at our, our tools at our hands. And again, just, just as a reminder for emergencies, please call 911. But please don't call 911 for general questions. Dispatches are very busy. Police and fire are very busy. This is not the time to be asking where, you know, what businesses are open, who's serving takeout. And that's the kind of calls the dispatch is getting even on 911 right now. So we'd ask for the community's help in just using common sense at this point. We'll make sure to circulate this. We're going to send a mailing to some of our elder human services clients that we don't think use technology much to make sure. And I'll also add before stepping aside for speakers that our elder human services staff have called many, many people in town. I know I got a phone message at home since I'm the right age apparently, but they personally reached out to a demographic of, I believe, over 60, which I really appreciated. My wife didn't appreciate quite as much, but I appreciated it. We are here to help. We can't help you unless you let us know. We are very appreciative of the fact that a lot of residents and neighbors are helping each other and there's no reason for us to stand in the way of that. But if there's any shortfall and some kind of a need of a safety net, the town will match you with help. So again, please use all these resources. And I think, I think the most helpful place to start, Mark, is if Kevin and Carrie could speak from a human elder services perspective.
Please, that would be great. Carrie or Kevin, would you like to speak?
Okay, I think I'm muted.
You are.
First off, Community Services has not had any downtime since this started. I'll just go through the brief, the divisions very briefly. Number of phone calls from veterans and spouses as to whether or not Chapter 115 checks would be going out. Now, again, I want to thank you Finance Department. Those checks will be going out on time and those are to the people that are in need. So thank you very much for that. Recreation unfortunately has been busy processing a lot of refunds to programs that have been canceled. They've also been helping out with the phone calls that Bob has mentioned and I'll talk about a little bit more. They're also planning for the future when this, when this crisis passes and we're ready to, to get recreation going again. As far as the Pleasant Street Center, it is closed. Meals on Wheels is something that's provided by Mystic Valley Elder Services. That is continuing and they are providing, Deb and Larry, and they provide over 450 meals per week to local residents. And that, we've had a small uptick. Carrie Valley has added a few people to that list and I anticipate having to add more. But again, they've been doing a great job with that and thank you to them. The Pleasant Street staff, as soon as we, we closed the center, we started making what we thought were just wellness calls, just to check in on people to say hello, how are you doing? They've, they've turned into more than just a hello, how are you? They've turned, they've turned into chat sessions. People are very lonely and they are very, very happy to, to have a welcome voice. And it's been great to hear that friends, families, neighbors have really been stepping up, checking on people. There are other organizations, I was speaking with someone today, the Knights of Columbus had given them a call earlier to check on them. So right now that everybody, for the most part, is doing well. And the few instances that, that people aren't, we've been able to, to work things out and get them the assistance that they need. So thank you to all the Pleasant Street staff for doing that and to, again, to the recreation staff who was pitched in. We've done well over a thousand communications to this point between making phone calls and answering messages that people have left on our, on our voicemails. And I also want to thank Gail Dowd. She's done a great job communicating with Carrie Valley on needs of families in the town through the school system. So that, that's been great and Kelly's been, Carrie's been able to add numerous families to the food pantry. So when they hopefully open up on Friday, they, they'll be able to get assistance. That's, that's, that's about it. I'm proud of everybody and all the work they've been doing. And again, we're here to figure things out as we go, just like everybody else.
Thanks, Kevin. And some of you will recognize Kevin is having been in charge of Veterans Affairs in town and has taken on this new role. And obviously you're, you're, you're stepping in with feet, hands and everything else. So much appreciated, Kevin.
Well, thanks, Mark.
Carrie, anything else you'd like to add as well?
No, we just, our staff has been working tirelessly to make sure everybody in the community is safe and doing well. It's been a long road, but we're doing a great job and I think we have a great team and teamwork is really the key here. And we have great communicators and I think it's going as well as it can. Uncharted Waters and we're doing a good job.
Thank you for all your efforts.
Sure.
Awesome. To go back for a second, I don't know if Amy or John, do you want to speak for a moment on, on library activities? Not John Dougherty, sorry, John Brzinski.
Hi, it's Amy. We are doing basically a lot of similar things to recreation and the Pleasant Street Center, which is just really shifting, what can we do online? We're continuing to, you know, pay bills and receive materials, but we're also doing a lot with our virtual, we're adding a lot with our collections, trying to get that publicized and out. We're doing a lot of cross-promotion with the town and the schools and trying to make sure that everything we get from them gets pumped out to our community as well, our parts of the community. But other than that, a lot of it is just, you know, a little backup and a little help. We, it's been great. The town's reached out whenever they needed a few extra staff here and there and we're trying to, just trying to help out where we can.
Thanks very much, Amy. Joe, would you like to say a few words, Joe Huggins? Just need to unmute yourself first.
In the office here, there's no more than two of us here every day in facilities and we're, like Bob said, we're working on a rotating schedule. The guys are traveling separately in the trucks. We're still performing a lot of the work in the, in the town and school buildings. It's mandated that we have to do, for instance, like elevator inspections and sprinkler and fire alarm and things of that nature. So we're here, we're here every day. We're operating as we normally would with, you know, taking care to make sure that we're not in contact with other people as little as possible. We're providing additional cleanings to the public safety buildings above and beyond what we normally do, which is once a week, we're going through the Main Street Fire Station, West Side Fire Station, including all their vehicles. We're doing that on a Sunday. And then on Mondays, we're moving into the police station and we're doing the entire building. They're using the latest technology. You've probably seen it on TV. It's a misting machine and they go through and they sort of fog an area and then they go through and they disinfect and sanitize all the areas of all those, those three public safety buildings I just mentioned. And doing the cruisers also. We just extended that into the Public Works Garage, including their fleet of the frontline vehicles, I'll call them, that are used every day. And we're also providing cleaning services during the day on the town side because, you know, obviously there are, there are four buildings that are open that have limited staff, but especially the public safety buildings in DPW. We're making sure that we're, we have an active presence in the buildings to make sure that, you know, all the touchpoints are hit, disinfected with the, the chemical that we're using that fights this virus and kills it. And so we're here, we're willing to help out however we can. We're working really closely with the school department. The elementary schools were all completely cleaned. We're in the middle schools tomorrow, starting the top to bottom cleaning of that. The high school, I believe by tomorrow will be completely done also. And we're just monitoring closely who's coming in and out. If we do go into a building, we're cleaning behind us and going back out the door. So we're doing targeted repair work. We're not looking, we're not doing any major projects right now. Again, it's just keeping up with the work orders that come in and we're doing building checks also to make sure that the, the facilities are protected. So if anybody needs us, they know how to get ahold of us. We're here for you if you need anything.
Thanks, Joe. Jane, in terms of Public Works, anything that you wanted to add?
I know we just, as Bob mentioned, we started splitting our shifts last Monday, the 23rd. So only half of the guys in, at one time. And they, instead of starting their day off, let's say in the, you know, central area, we've asked them to split up into the various garage phase. So there's only, you know, three or four people at the very most starting out to the various destinations in town. We've, we've stopped doing, going into houses as much as possible because we used to do a lot of meter change outs, that type of stuff. All of that is on hold. We're only doing emergencies that, but you know, regular pothole, that type of stuff is continuing, so.
Great, thanks, Jane. Jane Wellman and Matt, would you folks like to add something here? Jane, do you want to go first?
Sure, thank you. So I've been working on outbound communications and working, liaising with the command team to push out updated numbers, to give the Board of Health orders that have been approved and all kinds of, so we, the first webpage that was created was January 23rd on the Board of, the Public Health website. And so we optimized that and took kind of a narrative approach. So every new order that was posted came up in order. Then we add a number of lists of resources at the bottom for the state, federal CDC guidelines and local resources. This became an untenable solution and it was not very user friendly. So last week, we redesigned the website and added that red bar that's considered an urgent alert. And I would encourage people to subscribe on the website to the urgent alerts. So anytime that that page is updated, it gets pumped out to all the subscribers. And so they're alerted for any changes. It has a number of subsidiary pages that are dedicated for instance, I've been working with Erin Schaefer almost daily to update and, and add resources for our local businesses. We have information there for our residents on, local residents, from what the school department is putting out, what the Board of Health has updated, local changes so that we have an update. Yeah, so if you look at that, that's great. Click the read more, yep. There you go. So at the top, you can see that has updated information, how to sign up for community alerts, to get those emails, follow us on social media. I take care of that as well. We have our updated number of cases and then there's a link to the COVID-19 Massachusetts dashboard that people can look at. That's, can be helpful. If you, so it gives you all of the latest update from the state. If you continue down on that, there's an in brief section. That's okay.
Sorry, I shrunk Massachusetts. Doesn't want to scroll for me, Jane, sorry.
I'm sorry. So anyway, on that same urgent alert page, there's an in brief section that has recent changes. So if the governor makes a change, I'll update it there. And for example, he changed the listing of essential businesses. So there's a link there that's really quick. People can find recent changes because it's such a fluid situation and because from nine o'clock in the morning to seven o'clock at night, things change. We try to keep it updated there. And then there's the, the longer subsidiary pages that folks can click over to. And we added for residents yesterday, a number of resources for mental health that was put together by the Reading Coalition, by the school department. And so we're trying to get those resources out to people as well. And then today, we updated the phone communication, those, the links that Bob talked about earlier. So people can call in, people can email us with questions. They can email us with information they want us to update the page with. It's really helpful. We need to know what people are looking for. And so we're trying to anticipate, we're looking what other towns are doing and trying to include those items as well. So this sort of a one-stop shopping for our residents can come here and get a lot of information. There are, there's a link here to scams that are happening, the District Attorney's Office has that, the text messages from the state is great. And then if you scroll down just a little bit further, these are the federal, state, the local resources and then resources for our businesses and residents. And then at the bottom, it's, if they have a question, yeah, so here's some information for our businesses, exactly. And we have a link there so folks can call 211 at the state level. It's one place where people can get information. Yeah, so here's the residence page and this has a lot of mental health pieces. Yep. Yep, so, and there's a webinar for teens, for parents of teens tomorrow, actually. So we want to put that link up there. And there's just a lot of, there's a lot here for folks. These are really tough time right now. And then, so if people can email us, Matt and I will, will go through suggestions and take those and, and continue to update that website. I spend pretty much every day working on, on items for that website, so.
Thanks, Jane. Matt, would you like to chime in?
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. I think, I think Bob covered it well in terms of what we're doing, in terms of incoming information from residents. I answer a lot of phone calls, I answer a lot of email. The new email addresses and phone lines have only been up for a couple of days, but I was still getting calls on my line, on Town Manager's Line, City Clerk. So it's been, it's been fairly busy with those type of calls and inquiries. Also, social media, people reach out to us on our Facebook page, and we, we generally, in normal times, don't like to, you know, engage too much on the social media. But if there's a question that came in on social media, I've been handling those as well for this situation. So, so we're, we're doing the best we can. I'm getting a lot of information to Jane, you know, three, four times a day, and getting those websites updated on a regular basis, so people could have the most accurate information out there.
Great, thanks, Matt. Select Board members, do you have any questions or comments while we have the whole group assembled here?
Hey, Mark, I have a question, this is Karen Herrick. Thank you very much for setting this up, and I had a number of questions, and a number of them were answered, so I appreciate everybody, and that you're all working together during this very difficult time. I hate to, I hate to ask this, but it is wonderful that we have so many services that are still ongoing from the town, and I'm wondering what the options are for, for staff to be tested. How is this being handled?
Who would like to respond, if they can, to that?
I can respond partly. The command staff has, you know, very detailed discussions about this. We're following state and federal protocols. There is no need to test staff across the board. Our public safety is probably the most physically at risk, and they are keenly aware of symptoms to look for and keenly aware of when there's reports in the community of symptoms. That does leave a little bit of opening for someone in the community they're dealing with that, that might have the virus and is asymptomatic. So we're just doing the best we can. You know, some businesses, I think some delivery businesses have now gone to testing people every day when they show up to work. We could do that, we're not there yet. Until the tests had a better turnaround, there was no sense in that. Now there's tests available that possibly have a much quicker turnaround, so that could be possible. So far, we haven't seen it to be necessary. And aside from our public safety staff, generally, all the rest of our staff are socially distancing very well, at least in terms of their work responsibilities. So I don't think there's any, you know, any call for anything above and beyond in a testing sense. All employees know, if they have any symptoms, to get in touch with their physician. We have ordered a couple of people not to come to work that have wanted to come to work. So we are being very careful and very prudent as far as that goes. And the one thing that this incident has taught all of us is that something that happened yesterday feels like three months ago. So we're trying to be very fluid, very nimble, because time is moving very, very fast on this. So everything I just told you in three days could be different, and we are recognizing that.
Thanks, Bob. Other questions from the board?
Hi, Bob.
Oh, sorry. Go ahead, Vanessa.
Oh, thank you. We've had a few emails come in from the public. I know that we have public comment technically later, but the staff might be well-equipped to handle some of these.
Great idea.
So I just wanted to flag them.
Please.
There were some questions about the nurse. Bob, I don't know if you want to take a look at those and see what you can and can't answer. I won't ask them all there, I'll sort of give you a minute to catch up. And another one came in. There's been a request to see if we can remove the basketball hoops from basketball courts to discourage playing. And that's the main board one. And there's also a question about the number of cases as of today.
Emmy, do you want to grab that one for a second?
Sure. A number of cases as of today is 31. And as far as I, other people can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe the intention was to try and zip tie the basketball hoops. Yes.
As opposed to taking them down, you mean?
Yeah.
Yes, that happened today.
It happened today. Oh, great, thank you, Jane.
And if I could add, unfortunately, we've already had comments about taking those steps and wishing that they would be undone so they could play basketball.
Well, that, that's not, that's not okay. Right? Carlo, I think you had some comments?
I just had a question for you, Jane or Emmy, on guidelines. Are we following the state's essential, non-essential guidelines to the T? Or are we flexible on that stuff?
Do you mean in terms of businesses?
Sorry, businesses, sorry, yes.
We should be, yes.
Okay, so we're not doing it by the state, okay.
Other questions or comments from the board? Any, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to thank all of the staff and Emmy for all of your yeoman's work in, in rising to the occasion of this, of this crisis. And, you know, I, I know that there were employees in the, in the police department who tested positive. And last I'd heard, they were recovering well, and I hope that continues to be the case. And my heart goes out to all members of the community who have been impacted by this. And although this is a very, this social distancing and the situation can leave us feeling very isolated, I hope that tonight's meeting will, will leave you feeling somewhat encouraged that, that you are not alone, that we are all in this together, if separately. And, and if you are in need of assistance, please do reach out to, to any of us and to the, the names and numbers and email addresses that have been, have been provided this evening.
Thanks, Ann. Any other board comments?
Mark, could I make a comment, please?
Hi, John, yes, please.
Hi, yes. I, I noticed that in one of the-
Can I interrupt for a second, John? Can I actually introduce yourself?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. John Stumpbeck, I'm one of the RMLD Commissioners. And Colleen, thank you very much. I think she covered the RMLD in terms of what we're doing extremely well. But I did have a question about whether the town can be in any way more proactive in terms of letting our small businesses know what's available, specifically through the SBA. I know there was a line item in one of the charts that I had seen, but, excuse me for a second, I got to get rid of this. But the question is, there are multiple programs, at least three, both sponsored by the federal government and some by the state, that I don't know if everyone in our small business community or media business community knows about, and whether we could somehow provide a communication to them to help them out in these times.
Erin, would you like to handle that one? Whoop, are you there, Erin? I'm not sure. Is Erin still with us here?
I'm here.
Hi there.
Hi. So, yes, I've been writing a daily-
Could you introduce yourself, Erin, please? I'm sorry.
Sure. I'm Erin Schaefer, I'm the Economic Development Director with the town. I'd like to refer everyone to the Economic Development page on the town's website, as well as Jane's, the red bar at the top of the website also has this information. So I've been writing a daily letter of, for business support and resources, which is, you know, as you know, things are very fluid. So that letter is updated. There are a number of resources that are available, and that letter and website has all that information there available. It was last updated yesterday afternoon. I was on a call earlier today and have some updated information that I'll be publishing tomorrow.
Sorry, Erin, I tried to grab that link that you sent me, and I'm unable to bring it over, I apologize.
Sure, that's okay. So I'll just, again, it's on the Town of Reading's webpage, under the Economic Development page. That button can be accessed from the homepage of the Town of Reading website. And I will, Mark, do you need me to resend this link?
So I've got, can I take, catch it from here?
Yep, catch it from there. So on the left-hand side, there's an Economic Development button.
Let me try, in case they didn't think I was serious, I'm trying it again. There we go.
Right up top, updated COVID-19 business support. And that letter is updated almost daily, and it has all the links and information. It's about federal, state, and local resources. That includes information about all the SBA programs. It talks about mass hire, it talks about, it has unemployment links, has all sorts of information there. So I would refer all businesses to that page. And I've made over 60 calls, trying to get the word out as much as possible. So if there are specific businesses who need to speak to me, please email me or call me on my office line. I am getting my phone forwarded to my personal cellphone, so I can take calls. And I'm happy to help anyone connect with any resources.
Thanks, Erin. We, we just, we're joined by Pastor Jamie Michaels, who I think can speak for a moment about Food Pantry. Jamie, are you able to, to join here for a minute? Are you able to unmute yourself and speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Hi there.
Thanks so much, Mark, I appreciate that. So I wanted to start by, anybody who doesn't know, I just want to tell you a couple of things about the Food Pantry. So prior to the COVID-19 situation, the Food Pantry served 127 clients, just for, families, I'm sorry, families. Just for reference, when I came to live in this community four years ago, we served 100 clients. So that's been an increase of 30% roughly in four years. Since the crisis, we've had roughly another, it's, it's hard to tell, maybe 10 to 20 families come onto the Food Pantry's roster, or at least our radar, who have contacted the Food Pantry to, to ask for additional support. So those numbers are increasing, and we're going to see that go up as people are really feeling the effects of losing their jobs and losing their hours, losing their wages. To, typically, to come to the Food Pantry, you have to be a Reading resident, and you have to meet economic qualifications. So we will serve people once and then refer them to Carrie Valley, who does an intake and application process with them to make sure they meet our guidelines. Right now, we're being a little bit looser about that, because we know that people are in need right now, and we don't have time to process paperwork for folks. So we're inviting people to just come to the Food Pantry, and we'll serve you, and then we'll work out the details sort of later when we're out of crisis mode. Many of you probably heard the Food Pantry closed for two weeks. We did that on the advice of other food pantries and sort of in following best practices, because we didn't know how else to keep the clientele of the Food Pantry safe. We wanted to encourage people to distance if they could, and we thought that maybe by closing early, that we might be able to sort of stem the tide of, of people coming in contact with each other. We discovered pretty quickly that we are going to have to come up with some different way to serve people, because we are going to be quarantined for a lot longer than we originally thought. So we've, under the, the guidance and the example of the Governor's Office and many other food pantries and the Greater Boston Food Bank, we're opening up again this Friday. The way that Food Pantry typically works is the, the list of families is split up, A through J last names, and then the, the other end of the alphabet, L through Z last names, K through Z.
Thank you.
Sorry, I don't know my alphabet. And so, and those folks come on different weeks, so they'll come on the first and third or the second and fourth week, depending on where their last name falls. So Food Pantry opens up again this Friday for A through J names, and again, this coming Monday for A through J names. We're then closed for Good Friday, and then we'll be back again the following Monday, the Monday after Easter, so that's April 13th for K through Z names. So again, just real quick, this Friday and this coming Monday for A through J names. We're closed Good Friday, and then back again after Easter for K through Z names. Now, I know that some folks who don't fit in those particular categories will be in need of food now. And if you're in, in need in any way, food or otherwise, you can call me. My number is 978-276-9478. And that's a Google Voice number that will come directly to me, and I can connect you to the Food Pantry Services or help you to find the, the other resources that you need. Want you to know that we're keeping the safety of our clients and volunteers first in mind. So we're going to serve people at their cars, they're not going to come into the church building to be served. We have a police detail who's going to come in and run traffic. It's South United Methodist Church, right downtown, the church with the steeple, the bell tower, right in the middle of town. We want folks to come in on the Salem Street side. So come in as though you're going into the cemetery and come around the building, and then they'll exit out on Main Street. And so hopefully, we'll have some folks directing traffic and helping, helping people in and out. And then inside the building, our volunteers are going to remain six feet apart from each other and sanitize every time they come in or out to serve a client. A lot of you have been asking how you can support the work of the Food Pantry, and I really appreciate that. You've been fantastic, I want to thank all of you for your efforts around Limpy the Town Turkey, and all of you who have called and asked how you can help during this time. The best thing that we can say right now is financial contributions. You can send checks to 6 Salem Street. You can label them Reading Food Pantry and send them to 6 Salem Street, we're checking the mail there. Or you can get gift cards, we love gift cards in the amount of $25, because typically, we give out $15 gift cards, and the 25s help us to help, help our families just a little bit more. We know there are lots of things that they can't get on food stamps, things like paper goods, personal hygiene items, and we'd love to be able to just help people out a little bit more during that, this time. So you can make checks, or you can, on our Facebook page, the Food Pantry Facebook page, you can find a link to PayPal that goes right to us, or donate gift cards, and you can send them right to the church. They'll get where they need to go. We have lots of volunteers right now. The Rotary Club has really graciously stepped in and filled in some of the, the spots for some of our older volunteers who are feeling safer staying home. So we don't have a need for volunteers in person right now, although I'll let you know if that changes. And appreciate your support. Anybody else have any other questions?
Thank you very much, Jamie, very, very helpful. Really appreciate your, your stepping in to, to speak about the Food Pantry.
I appreciate your support of our people, and just encourage you to remember that even after this crisis, and the effects, especially for those who are most vulnerable in our town, are going to be felt for a long time. And so encourage you to just keep them in mind, even when lots of us will go back to work and our routines will become more normalized. And remember, there are lots of folks in our community who are going to be struggling for a long time. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Bob, from your side, anything else, please? On this topic?
Mark, if you don't mind, just, just to advise the community, we've received at last count just over $4,000 worth of donations, primarily to the police station in the form of gift cards. Our Human Elder Services have given those out on a limited basis, and whatever's left over, as soon as the Food Pantry's open on Friday, will be given to the- and whatever is left over, as soon as the Food Pantry is open on Friday, will be given to the Food Pantry. So certainly, a big thanks to those in the community that have thought of their neighbors in need. We really do appreciate that.
Thank you. Bob, could you also just highlight the opportunity to get gift cards to the lockbox at the police station?
There are two locations that I'm aware of. One is behind the superintendent's office and the high school. One is at the police station. They're secure locations, small boxes that if someone wants to drop a gift card in, they can. Also, I'd encourage folks to deal with the Food Pantry as well, but we'll certainly help out if those locations are helpful.
And the drop box at Old South Church is our mailbox, the best mailbox for us is the door with the rainbow flag that faces Salem Street. There's a mail slot right in that door that goes to a locked mailbox that only we have keys to. So you can feel free to make donations there.
Great.
Great. Vanessa, you had a couple more questions?
I did. A couple, just a conversation I had with someone regarding communicate, and I know your memo, Bob, went into a lot of detail in the package, so thank you. People should definitely check that out. But as far as communication goes to staff, so it was mentioned earlier, we have had staff members who have been confirmed positive. Have, what efforts are made to communicate with all the staff within the extensive town staff to let them know if they've been potentially in contact with those individuals?
Through command, so that information has been very well dispersed. Fortunately, we're not seeing a lot of need for that right now, and we're hoping for the best that that continues.
Okay, great. Thank you. And Joe, you had mentioned that there's been deep cleanings of town buildings. Does that include the DPW and all the trucks?
Yeah, we've actually, we got into the rotation with the police and fire stations two weeks ago. And so as of Monday, they've been done twice. And prior to that, we were going through and doing it with our own people in the buildings. So then we decided to step it up and do that to the police and fire stations. And then today, I met the contract cleaner down there, and we targeted the areas to be done, and it's going to include the entire frontline vehicles for the DPW. And that's also going to get put into the weekly rotation.
Fantastic. Thank you. And then, you know, for both police and fire and DPW, who are all the people out in the field, so to speak, do we, I mean, it sounds minor, but do we have things like sanitizer available for them in trucks so that when they're out and about, that's ready for them?
Yeah. We actually have, when we saw this whole thing unfolding, we put some, we were very well stocked at the beginning. And as you can imagine, we're going through a lot of this stuff right now, a lot of the disinfectant and the sanitizer and the wipes. As you can imagine, they're nowhere to be found on shelves. So we added more dispensers at strategic locations. I'll talk about the schools first. Bolted them right to the walls, added more, distributed what we had for wipes, and then went into doing a lot of touch surfaces. And then as things evolved, we put hand sanitizer on people's desks. We actually went through the schools today, and we, with the superintendent's permission, got a good supply of the wipes that are being stored in our shop here right now for first responders and other departments that are in direct contact, that might be in direct contact with the public. I also put an order in today for more rubber gloves and surgical masks, which are not the N95s, but they do offer good protection, which I'm going to deliver over to the fire station tomorrow. So we're all working together to make sure everybody has what they need. People shouldn't be shy to reach out to us because we, you know, we know the frontline responders are the ones that we need to really outfit correctly, if you will.
Great. Thank you so much, Joe. I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Other questions? Board, other members who joined us, really appreciate, we have twenty-eight people participating right now. Very much appreciate you all taking the time to do that, or any comments from inside the group right now? Okay. I think what we'll do is we'll move ahead on the agenda. The next topic relates to community response to the COVID-19 pandemic. I just wanted to make a couple of comments on this. Clearly, this is an area that's hitting all of us in different ways, but in many cases, very severely. We all have friends and loved ones that can't be with us here now due to safety needs, and specifically to keep them and us safe. We also have neighbors who are more vulnerable, who need our support, and also need us to stay away from them. We're all developing new rules for social interaction. The neighbor-to-neighbor networks that Bob mentioned are great. They exist. They're forming. They're fantastic. They really are the heart and soul of Reading and is really a tribute to what's going on here. I wanted to highlight a few things that the chiefs brought up, Bob brought up, Jane brought up as well, just to kind of bring everything into context for us all. You know, with the President of the United States extending his call for social distancing, the Governor of Massachusetts calling for continued closure of nonessential businesses and advising people, stay at home, the messages are all very clear. The governor has issued a stay-at-home advisory for individuals over the age of seventy and for those with underlying health conditions, with the exception of essential trips and exercise. The governor's order also advises staying at home for all those who aren't providing essential services, except for necessities, again, including exercise. Individuals in the Commonwealth and in the town should always practice social distancing, which means keeping a distance of six feet between you and other people. We, as Reading residents, need to heed these orders to help to control the spread of the virus and, very importantly, to protect our most vulnerable citizens. The board for the use of fields and other public areas, and it's been highlighted, in some cases, the police have been responding to some of these calls. We really need to act as a community here. We need parents and children all to understand the severity of the problem, the importance of distancing, and to stay at least six feet apart at all times. This means that parents need to make sure that children do not go out to play with friends unless they can maintain six feet of distance between them. It means adults also need to practice social distancing. This is our responsibility as a community. And as Bob and the chief highlighted, this is not where we want our public safety or public services personnel having to spend time or risk exposure. As it relates to Reading businesses, the business community clearly is suffering severely from the coronavirus. Nonessential services are closed down per the order of the governor and the Board of Health. Establishments that remain open focus on food and pharmacy. These businesses clearly are open for the benefit of the public, and they need your patronage in a safe way, with social distancing of patrons being very important. A number of grocery stores and pharmacies have established senior-only hours, where senior is, Bob defined as age sixty-plus. Please contact each store about their special hours. Again, please contact the store about their special hours, and be sure to utilize safe practices, including social distancing when going there. You're also encouraged to consolidate visits to grocery stores in particular, ideally only going once per week or ten days as is possible. The Select Board, so this is our first virtual meeting. I hope it's going well so far. I suspect the sound is probably better than it oftentimes is. We will be planning to meet virtually regularly, and we'll try to remain, sorry, maintain a normal schedule of every two weeks. We should also be prepared, we may need to meet specially and on short notice as needed. As it relates to town meeting, the town moderator and town manager issued a note to town meeting members last week indicating priorities for the meeting focused on the budget and that, given the governor's order for schools to remain closed through at least May 4th, town meeting will very likely be delayed. The Select Board has given authority to change the dates for town meeting, and we'll be working with the town moderator, town manager, Board of Health, and town council for dates, with current thoughts looking to sometime in June. We'll be looking at state legislation and coronavirus updates and keeping in mind the health and welfare of our citizens and town meeting members as we consider new dates. We probably should include an update on this as an agenda item for our April 14th meeting. I'd like to pause here for a moment before going deeper into the agenda and give other board members the opportunity to make comments that they'd like to. What I might suggest is, if you folks just want to go, or I can kind of pick alphabetical order if that makes the most sense, but why don't I open it to board members if they'd like to make comments?
I'll go first, Mark. That's okay.
Please.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody. Thank ICTV. Thank Mark for putting this together. It was a lot of guidance from Bob and from Phil. But maybe Bob could answer this one, or maybe Mark. What has been the response or input from Senator Lewis, Rep. Hagerty, and Rep. Jones, if at all?
Sure, I can respond. Senator Lewis has been on the phone with me or through his staff person, Emily, at least three or four times a week. I spoke to him for about a half an hour this morning. We have a regular call scheduled. Representative Jones, it depends on the legislation. Our representatives were more busy last week when a bill finally passed the House on Friday. That bill is now in front of the Senate, so I'm speaking to our senator more often. I would say they've all been extremely attentive, and I've never talked to them as often as I have in the last three weeks. They're really being very helpful. A lot of the legislation being discussed is very important for a number of parts of the community and for us as an organization. There does expect to be passage of a bill possibly as soon as tomorrow by the Senate. They've been working with the House to reconcile some differences. And then a signature by the governor, sorry, on Friday. That'll have a lot of municipal finance issues and election issues buttoned up. Finance is something that is not as important as life safety, but it's just around the corner for us all to think about in terms of the impact on the state's finances and the town's finances. So we've got that covered, and we're working on that. So I'd say generally, Carlo, our three elected officials have done a terrific job, and they work very collaboratively with the government.
I had something today via Zoom this afternoon to update residents in the district. Also, Bob, you mentioned in your opening statements, and we have an email from a resident about the boards and committees in town who obviously want to get back to work. And I know you said the state is working on it. Is it a matter of days? Or is there going to be any guidance on when our boards and committees in town can get together via Zoom or just try to work on things that, to move things forward so we won't get behind?
Specifically for the land use boards, the legislation is expected on Friday to be signed, same legislation. The issue is, there's a lot of land use issues that if the town does not act by a certain deadline, then it's, things are approved by default, which obviously is called constructive approval. So we certainly don't want the absence of boards meeting and the ability to have public hearings to mean that anyone can file for anything they want and get it. So that's one of the first things I asked the legislator to fix, and they are going to fix it. It is, it will happen this week. Public services have worked on a policy statement for the land use boards. So as soon as that legislation is buttoned up, starting next week, the land use board should be all clear. I have not received any requests or comments from other than a land use board so far.
Okay.
I'd like to chime in on that also. I know that the school committee is, I believe, planning a meeting for next week. And one of the things that I guess is happening here also is this is kind of a test for kind of a purely virtual meeting taking place, and hopefully, we'll learn and improve from these, and those can be opportunities going forward. One of the challenges we'll face is public hearings and trying to figure out the best way to have people participate in those. There's discussion, we should have some discussion, and I know there's other discussion going on as well about how this is going to be handled to all the communities across the state and even beyond that. But that's a challenge we'll have to think about pretty soon. We're scheduled to have a public hearing on the 14th related to parking.
Okay. Oh, thank you. And again, from an email from a resident, shout out to everyone, a specific shout out to Emmy Dove and all she has done during this crisis, and to the whole Board of Health Board and Board of Health staff, of course. I just wanted to mention that. We did receive some emails tonight. Vanessa did mention some of them as well. Michelle will get some more in the future. So please reach out to us with any questions or concerns. A lot of it's been covered tonight. And we'll probably have a few more comments from the board. And that's it. And then to address the small business community, Erin made a good point that there's a lot of information out there, but there's a lot of restrictions and a lot of requirements for these loans and things at the federal level don't match up with the state level. So please reach out and research what you can. The CARES Act was filed by the federal government, and the state, our state of Massachusetts has not adopted that yet. But there's a lot of restrictions and requirements to apply for a small business loan. I know the SBA at the local level will be working with businesses. The state went through that first ten million dollars pretty quickly. I know they're going to provide another ten million to be loaned out by the MGCC through the state, so Masco with Capital. So there's a lot going on, and as this goes on, at least till May 4th, a lot of businesses are going to be devastated, and I'm hoping they can hang in there. But rents are going to be due, utilities are going to be due, insurance is going to be due. There's so many things that have to be paid for when you're open or closed. And if you're laying people off, from what I've read, that goes against getting approved for a loan, and there's a lot of stipulations. So please do your research. Please reach out to the authorities that are providing the loans, or your local bank, that are SBA-approved lenders. I know there's plenty around. I'm pretty sure Eastern Bank is one, Danvers Bank is one. I'm not sure if Reading Co-op is, or the Citizens Bank, but the small business community, a lot of the residents have been doing great with the places that are open. But takeout cannot sustain a full-service restaurant. Takeout cannot sustain a breakfast-lunch establishment. So we're just hoping that we can all get through this, but the business has been stepping up, and we just have to do our best and hope for the best.
Thanks, Carlo. Erin has chimed in the background and sent to folks here. And what we'll do also is post it in other places. But that webpage that I went to, going to the town website, going to Economic Development, the letter, it's called the COVID-19 Business Support and Resources Letter, and that has a lot of, at least the information on what requirements and how to apply, where to apply, things like that. So, great. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Mark, if I might?
Please.
Every business is different, but I just want to make sure, Carlo, that everyone understands that if a business can meet the criteria handed out by the SBA, the loans will be forgiven. So it's not just a loan that you have to pay back. If you can meet the conditions, and I'm not sure every business could, one of them being to maintain your payroll, then those loans will be forgiven in six months. You don't have to pay them back. So that's, so the word loan is used, but just so it's clear, it's much better terms than just a regular loan.
I agree. I read somewhere where it's eight weeks. So again, I don't know where to get the exact correct information. You just mentioned six months. I read today it was eight weeks. So I don't know where to, hopefully, the site that Erin, all the links that Erin has posted are accurate. But six months would be great if you can meet the requirements. But I, like I said, I read eight weeks, so hopefully, we'll see what happens.
Erin, is there anything else you'd like to add to that?
I can speak to that a little bit. So I do want to refer back to the letter, and I will be updating this tomorrow regarding the CARES Act. But there are a lot of different types of programs that are there with different requirements for each one of those programs and different deadlines and eligibility requirements. So if you are a business out there who needs support and needs to speak to somebody about what program makes the best sense for you, there are professional resources through the SBA and through the SCORE program. And I will, again, post that information there for businesses who are looking for specific business advisors to help them through the process and prepare to take advantage of any of these programs and to get all the information that they need to really figure out what program fits best for their business needs.
Great. Thanks, Erin. Other board members? Ann, I see you're chiding.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. This is Ann Landry. I'm just hearkening back to Emmy's comment about the impact is often, what we see is about reflects actions taken two weeks ago. So to that, and knowing that the governor is So to that and knowing that the governor is predicting a surge in about two weeks' time, it just reinforces the importance of what we are doing now. Will have an impact later on the capacity of our healthcare system to take care of our friends and neighbors and family if they should need medical care. So I encourage everyone to follow very strictly the social distancing guidelines that our Board of Health, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, and the governor have issued. And to that end, I think it's apparent to me, and I think, I suspect I speak for the rest of the board, that town meeting will be delayed. It would not be safe or or intelligent for us to hold a town meeting at the end of April, perhaps still at the height of the surge. And for me, in terms of when the timing will make sense for us to meet again, I think it will be helpful to have better predictive modeling as to when that, one that may be safe for a group to congregate. And I, in particular, would like to see what alternatives we might have in terms of meeting virtually, knowing that I would really like to do all we can to protect vulnerable members of our community. And certainly, there are many town meeting members who have pre-existing conditions. So I would really like us to do all we can to schedule that next event.
Thanks, Ann. Karen or Vanessa, would you like to add some comments?
Thanks, Mark. There was a few more questions that came in from public comment. Would you like those now, or would you like to wait?
I think this is working well to bring them up now, so please.
Okay. So there was one question regarding food bank donations, if Jamie's still on, and whether the food bank is accepting food donations or only gift cards at this time.
Jamie had to chime off, but what I thought I heard her say is that the most useful things for them are gift cards.
Okay. They are accepting food, though, too.
Oh, great. Oh, sorry, Carrie's here, so please, yeah.
Yeah, they are still accepting food. And they're able to leave that either at the local supermarkets or at the food bank itself.
There are bins outside Stop &amp; Shop and Market Basket, I think right at the entrance of one by the liquor store and Stop &amp; Shop, and then in Market Basket. I'm not sure where it is. But people can throw the food in there.
Fantastic. Thank you. Someone asked regarding the frequency of our meetings and if we were willing to meet every week as opposed to every other week in order to provide updates. There is something to be said for this, especially for members of the community that don't have internet access, and that's where the bulk of our information is currently available. So it might be who of us to have shorter meetings, sort of if they're the in-between weeks that are strictly dedicated to the COVID-19 town response.
What are other members feeling about that?
I'm fine with that. I think it's a great idea.
I'm also open to that.
Karen?
I would be supportive of something like that. Thank you.
Okay, great. So why don't we start planning it that way, that we'll post ourselves weekly?
Great. Thank you, Mark. And then there was the question that came in about the nurses. Bob, I don't know if you've had a chance to take a look at that email. It did come into the board. Did you receive it?
Yeah, I just got word that we have a backup nurse available tomorrow that's trained in Maven, so we should be good.
Fantastic.
Excellent.
And then the last comment that came in from the public that I saw was regarding having there are multiple members on Facebook who have been posting information, and they asked that the board speak with a single voice as opposed to having individual members be providing COVID-19-related information. So again, just relaying what the public submitted to us.
Well, it sounds like a great idea, and maybe what we can do is pick one person to take responsibility for posting information as it's provided. Ann, I see you're chiming in.
I was nodding along. You know, it's interesting because we're all we may not all be on every social media site. Certainly, so any different sites have different, or different Facebook pages have different rules. I like the idea in theory. I also don't necessarily want to muzzle anybody else's ability to speak. I have been posting on Reading MA coronavirus support as well as my own personal page. I'm happy to continue doing that. I have made clear that I'm doing so, you know, in my own capacity, not in an official capacity as a designee of the board, but I'd be happy to take that on in an official way if folks would like me to do that and to continue doing those things.
This might be a good time, given the circumstances, and you and I had met as a subcommittee to talk about communications this past year. It might be time to expedite a select board Facebook page. I don't know how the board feels about that.
Largely what I've been posting is sharing what different town, other town Facebook pages have shared. So I tend to share those those posts in the Reading Mass coronavirus support page.
This is Karen. The Town of Reading Facebook I'm not sure everyone is aware of the information that has been going up there, so I have shared a few items to the larger Reading Parents Network, one or two items. And that might be something that staff might be willing to do as we sort of build up awareness of both the coronavirus and the Town of Reading Facebook pages.
Carlo gave a comment on?
No, I'm just, I think it's a good idea about how do we manage it and who's going to be the admin and, you know, stuff like that. I think it is a good idea. And I know the board has been working on a communications directive before the election, and we should not stop that. So I think Vanessa is on to something. It's just how do we manage it and who's in charge of it, and do we have to agree on each post, and just things like that. I think it would be a big deal, but how do we manage it?
So I know when Vanessa and I had previously met as a subcommittee, Vanessa had had done all of the work relative to a social media policy, and I had not done any of that work. I don't want to put too much work on to Vanessa, but if you wanted to come back to our next meeting with a proposal on the social media policy, it wouldn't require us to meet again as a subcommittee necessarily, although we could try to figure out some kind of virtual meeting before then if you wanted. But if you yourself just wanted to work on that piece and come back for our meeting next week, that might be one way to move forward.
Sure. So I have the policy. It needs to be tidied up a little bit more. It is lengthy. But Ann, it might be helpful if you and I, even if it's a brief Zoom meeting, so that there's someone else I can bounce it off of based off of what, I mean, it's all pulled from what other towns do, but before we add it to the bigger agenda. So why don't we coordinate with Bob to set a date for next available?
Okay. Sure, I'm happy to do that.
Great.
Okay, why don't we move forward from there? Are there any other kind of comments inside the group on response at this point, or should we move ahead into the rest of the agenda? Okay, seeing no comments, I think we should move forward. Is the board comfortable with how we're working with public input right now? In other words, taking it kind of as it's coming, but we'll also leave time toward the end to address it as well? Is that working okay for everybody? Okay, so let's do that. All right, let's move ahead then to the scheduled votes that we have. So let me, I'm going to share the screen. Sorry, I'm navigating way too many things at the moment. So to give an overview, these are the votes that we're going to be taking this evening. First up on the list, sorry, I just need to move the page. And sorry that this is so large. First up in the voting is to discuss declaring a state of emergency in the Town of Reading. As of 2:00 PM today, and I'm sorry, I didn't catch what it said on the website there, if any further updates, there are 197 communities out of the 351 in the Commonwealth that have already declared a state of emergency, with Woburn being the latest of our neighbors to do so. Today, the Board of Health voted a state of emergency. That's the Reading Board of Health voted a state of emergency. And this is how many communities are handling this, with having both the Board of Health and the Select Board work together and vote a state of emergency. The main impact of voting in favor of a state of emergency is that it can help emphasize the significance of the situation, and it offers some clarity of action between the Board of Health and the Select Board, which is the chief elected board of the town. I believe it's very much in our interest to do that this evening and fully support the Board of Health in their declaration. Are there comments from other board members on that?
No.
I'm in agreement.
Hi, Grace.
Great. So Carlo, this is quite oh, sorry, I'm sorry, cutting through. Can someone, maybe everybody mute themselves just for a moment, and then we'll come back? Maybe it's me. I better make sure. There's quite the document, or quite the piece here. Can everybody see this declaration as it's laid out? This is wording that we got from town. Carlo, would it make sense, do you want to would it make sense to read through this one, or should we accept the "whereas" as written as we can see them and then move to the "therefore"?
I will ask if the board is okay with that. I'm okay with that. We have a declaration of emergency proposed for the board to do a vote.
So if the board is okay, can, let's move forward. Can you start with the "therefore" section, which is like the second to last paragraph and through the end, please?
Okay, got it. Okay. Therefore, the Select Board pursuant to its authority under Section 4.7.4.1 of the Massachusetts Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan dated January 2019 and any other applicable law, sorry about that, hereby declares a state of emergency to the Town of Reading as a result of the threat of COVID-19 as recognized by global, national, and state health officials. And to continue, the Town Manager shall appoint an Emergency Management Director, EMD. The EMD shall work with other local officials and representatives of state and national emergency personnel to direct all necessary or appropriate action, including but not limited to directing evacuations, opening shelters, mobilizing local resources, activating mutual aid agreements, requesting state and national assistance, and seeking appropriation of funds for all such actions. This declaration of a state of emergency is effective immediately and shall remain in effect until it is rescinded by the Select Board or the Governor's Declaration of Emergency is rescinded, whichever comes first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Bob, I'm sorry, I didn't ask for your comments on this one.
You summed it up well, Mark. I have nothing to add.
I do have a question. The Emergency Management Director, would that be Chief Burns, who's already been appointed to head command?
I can't address that. My predecessor, Pete Hackenbacher, appointed Greg many, many years ago. Ray thought this was a belt and suspenders' things for the board to do it again, just in case when it was done 25 years ago that the rules of how the appointment was made have changed.
Any other questions? Now, are we ready to take a vote then?
No.
Okay, I'm sorry, I neglected to show my operating slide at the beginning. I apologize. I stated most of the words. But I think what we should do is do roll call votes in all cases, just to make sure that if that's what will help us along, that we do that exactly. So if that's all right, I'm going to move ahead as I see your images on the screen. So Ann?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
And Mark votes yes, so we're 5-0. Okay. Sorry, I just got to bring my speaking points up here. Next is specific Board of Health matters. The Reading Board of Health has issued an order to ban door-to-door solicitation and canvassing until further notice. The Select Board needs to vote on supporting this ban this evening. Bob, is there any other information you would want to add to this?
No, this was a request specifically of the Police Department for two reasons. One is to keep the solicitors away from the public, if you will. But also, the solicitors would need to be fingerprinted and go into the police station, which virtually every police station has shut down that right now.
Great. Any board questions or comments?
No.
Okay, seeing none. Carlo, can I ask you to is it okay with the board if we spend whoops? Let's try that one more time. Would it be okay?
Hello?
Hi, is everyone on? Are you still able to hear me? Can I just hit non- heads?
I lost you for a moment there.
Okay, sorry. What I was asking is that would it be acceptable to the accept those and move to the "therefore" in the reading of the motion?
Yes.
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 Carlo, can I ask you to pick it up from "therefore"?
Okay. Therefore, the Select Board and the Board of Health pursuant to the powers and authority provided to, invested in them by the declaration described above, in all relevant state laws and lawful authority, including Massachusetts General Law, C. 111.104, do hereby issue this emergency order. All door-to-door solicitation and canvassing in the Town of Reading is hereby prohibited. The Chief of Police is directed to temporarily revoke all certificates of registration required for such soliciting and canvassing pursuant to General Law 8.9.9.5 for good cause as described in this order. This emergency order is effective immediately and shall remain in effect until it is rescinded by the Select Board and the Board of Health or the Governor's Declaration of Emergency. The Governor's Declaration of Emergency is rescinded, whichever comes first.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments from the board? None appearing. Go through the roll call again, please. So Ann?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Mark, yes, so we're 5-0. Sorry, I somehow didn't get the right size for the screen on that one. I'll try to go back up here. All right, sorry, let me just get my next document to come up here. Mark, I just want to say thank you to the Board of Health and the Select Board for taking care of that for us. I appreciate it. Thank you, Chief. Our pleasure. Okay. So next here is state legislative matters. The board has an opportunity to state its preference with respect to allowing a deferral on tax payments to assist those facing financial difficulties with the pandemic. The state legislature is expected to be voting in the coming days on providing a local option that would allow late payments on tax bills to June 1st as compared to May 1st here in Reading without penalty. Per Town Council, we can take a vote tonight to allow these late payments if this bill is in fact enacted into state law. And we can do this in advance of the legislature and governor signing the bill, which is anticipated in a matter of a few days. Carlo, could you read the motion, and then the board members can do a discussion, and then we can move to a vote on that? This is number three on the slides here.
Yep, number three. Move that the Town Manager shall be Move that the town manager shall be delegated the authority that is expected to be conferred upon the Select Board by legislation adopted by the state legislature, once signed into law by the governor, to provide relief from the late charges for property tax, water and sewer, and stormwater utility fees consistent with the limitations set forth in that legislation as enacted.
Is there a second? Karen, you got it.
Second.
Karen, second. Bob, do you have comments on this?
Yeah, I do, Mark.
Please.
This is the same bill that's pending that we hope is going to be wrapped up on Friday. The language that I've seen, both from the House and the Senate, is the same, so I have a pretty good suspicion it will finish that way, is to allow for any property tax bill or any water sewer, in our case, stormwater fee that is due between April 1st and June 1st. And for Reading, our tax bills are due May 1st, and our water sewer, stormwater fees are due April 15th. So each would qualify to be paid instead as late as June 1st without any penalty. And earlier, RMLD was discussing their flexibility. We are very limited in our flexibility. This would certainly give the residents at least four to six weeks of a break. Town Hall would heartily endorse that. If it's a hardship beyond that period of time, we totally understand, and we have payment plans that we can set up. But I will caution people that we, our hands are tied as to what those payment plans can look like. There is state law that prescribes interest rates that we must charge on those. So I would hard. So that we can make sure we can tell the community as fast as possible. It could be as quickly as Friday if the governor signs the legislation, just so people at least know for six weeks. Or in this case, for two months, really, they don't have to pay the town as they sort things out.
Thanks, Bob. Are there other board questions or comments? Seeing none. Are we ready to go for a vote? I'll do the roll call again. Ann?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
And Mark votes yes. So we're 5-0. Thank you, everyone, on that one. Next is approval of the Public Employee Committee and Town Agreement for FY '21 Health Insurance premiums. Bob, can you please provide board details on this?
Certainly. Do you want to have the motion first?
Sure. Yeah, I think that's what we really should be doing anyway. Carlo, can I ask you to read the health insurance agreement motion, please?
Okay, sure. Motion to approve the health insurance agreement and health insurance opt-out program side letter. Both dated July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2021, as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Karen. Hey, Bob, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. The PEC is a group of 16 unions in the town, the school, and the light department entities. It also has a 10% representation for retirees. Typically, this group does not finish negotiations on health insurance until May or even June. This year, they realized the circumstances, you know, cause for quick action. I was really impressed that we got together and somehow we were able to do a Zoom meeting before I even knew what it was and got unanimous approval from all the unions that could make it. Not every union could attend. There was about an 82% attendance weighted by those enrolled, so the schools are the largest. And the only changes, they were very good. The only changes that they asked for are no cost or actually advantage to the town. By adding retirees into the opt-out program, we could save money. Every time we pay an opt-out premium, the town saves, depending if it's single or family, $6,000 to $12,000. Dental to add those for retirees, the town doesn't pay anything for that, so it's not a cost to the town. And the reason that I wanted to meet quickly and bring this to you quickly is we got a really terrific renewal rate of 2.23%. And the future of health insurance is certainly unknown at this point, so we wanted to lock this down as quickly as possible. This is our third or fourth year of really, really good health insurance rates. I really appreciate the unions working so closely with us.
I have a question. Bob, I understand that not all of the unions were represented on the Zoom call. Have they all? Particularly those who weren't represented on the Zoom call, have they voted on this?
They have not. They did not attend the meeting, so they do not vote. They're all aware of it. They were all invited. Some of them just couldn't make it.
Did you hear any comment, either favorable or unfavorable afterwards?
No comment in either direction. I think the rate kind of speaks for itself, though, Ann.
Okay, thank you.
Other board comments? No, none appearing. Are we ready to take a vote on this? Return to our roll call. So Ann?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
And Mark votes yes. So we're 5-0 on this one as well.
Thank you.
Thanks, folks. Okay, next for the agenda is items not anticipated 48 hours before the meeting. I would actually, well, first of all, let me thank everyone for your patience and staying with us. And a lot of this, we believe, is the highest priority of the town right now, is to make sure that we're able to continue to offer all these services. I want to once again thank everyone who joined the call, the command staff, all the employees who are working to ensure our safety and, I can call it comfort in these times as well. So thank you for that. Within, in the last 48 hours, there is a topic that I'd like to bring up, and it is a we have some updates to discuss here.
Mark, I'd like to recuse myself at this time. I will step away. Can someone please text me when this topic has ended?
Yeah, so I'd like to ask you, you turn off, I guess, video and audio during this period. Ann, could you please send Vanessa a text after this part of the discussion so that she can rejoin the rest of the meeting at that time?
Yes, I can do that.
Great, thank you. Okay, so for members of the board, members of the community, we've been working with Town Council very closely over the last many days, but in particular the last few days, concerning the petition and a number of challenges that have been raised. Only yesterday did we come to a well-reasoned suggestion on the path forward, and I want to be able to share that with everyone for comment here. Very specifically, we spoke to Ray about the issue of notification to Vanessa. And there seems to be a lot of discussion about this, and I want to read to you a note directly from Ray to the town. This is from Ray. While I'm confident that as a matter of law, the Select Board received the petition and the registrar's certificate once it was delivered to Bob's office, and that he had ample authority to provide notice thereof to Vanessa, I am aware that others have questioned my conclusions. Rather than continue this disagreement, I believe that there is a sensible resolution that will remove this issue from further debate. Therefore, I recommend that the Select Board acknowledge its receipt of the petition and certificate, at least by today, when individual Select Board members all received copies. Then the Select Board can vote to instruct Bob to send a new notice to Vanessa, which will restart the five-day period specified in Section 8.11.3 of the Charter. And Ray continues. None of this has any practical impact on what you do tonight, since it would be premature for the Select Board even to consider calling an election until the five-day period has expired. And under any possible interpretation, that has not yet occurred. Signed by Ray Miaris, Town Council. So just to kind of bring that together here, the full board this morning received official notification and a copy of the certification of signatures performed by the Board of Registars, but received this from the town manager. This is the first formal notification to the entire board. I'm going to ask that the board review the certificate and vote on this tonight, as Ray had suggested. The vote would be to have Bob, as an agent of the Select Board, send official notification to Vanessa as soon as possible, e.g., tomorrow, Thursday. Once Vanessa receives this notification, the five-day period starts, which should culminate on April 14th in advance of our scheduled meeting on the 14th. And as you'll see later in our agenda, there's a discussion that I had put on there as a placeholder for us to discuss that at the next meeting. There are some objections that have been raised to the Board of Registars with the Select Board in copy, and the Board of Registars is working through those issues now. Let me take a pause. Is there any board question or discussion on this topic?
Mark, could you do me a favor and just repeat what this would happen? We would acknowledge receipt of the certificate tonight as a Select Board.
Exactly.
And what would happen between now and the next, April 14th is our next scheduled meeting?
So that currently is, although we just talked about having a meeting next week as well. So once the, the way the Charter states is that the the board is supposed to get notification, and then based on that move forward. And once Vanessa, in this case, receives this notice from the Select Board or an agent of the Select Board, she has five days to decide to either potentially resign her position or to not resign her position. Until that five-day clock is run, there can't be any discussion of a recall election or other activities. That's the way it's written.
And Mark, just to clarify, when you say the Select Board, upon receipt of the notification, moves forward, you mean moves forward forthwith in notifying the town officer, who is the subject of the recall petition, not moves forward to schedule a recall election?
Yes, thank you. Is to send this notification, which starts the five-day period officially and clearly. And per Ray's note, under any interpretation, that could not have happened for this evening. And what this is doing is more akin to satisfying some objections that have been raised. Other board comment or questions?
Quick question. Does our Charter, as a matter of normal business, specified business versus normal days, is there any distinction? Are they just always assumed to be calendar days?
So in this case, in the most liberal interpretation, if it is sent out, let's say tomorrow, if it's received, let's say if it were to be received on Saturday, we'd actually count five days that Town Hall is open, which would take us to the 14th. It would be Monday otherwise, but it's, I believe, is it Patriots Day? I used to call it Marathon Day, but not this year.
Okay.
So the USPS has a little bit of a role here, but that's the timeframe that we'd be talking about here. Any other questions on this? And again, I apologize that this is in the last 48 hours, but it is in the last 48 hours.
No, I think this is really important to be very precise and careful. And I thank the staff for already having put much of this information on the website. And with this new information that you've received, then they can update it as well, because I know that we're getting lots of emails from residents. And then we can direct them to a source of factual information on this topic.
Good. Okay, if there are no other comments, are there no other comments? Okay, so Carlo, I think we need to create a motion on the fly here. Something akin to moving that the board instruct the town manager to send to Vanessa Alvarado written notice of the recall petition and certificate. Does that, does that sound appropriate?
My best. Motion that the Select Board on April 1st notify Vanessa Alvarado per the Charter notice of the recall petition that was submitted to the town and certified by the Board of Registars.
So I think.
April 1st?
Yeah.
What? I'm sorry.
I would just take away April 1st because it can't be postmarked today.
Oh, okay.
And it also, I didn't hear clearly, but it needs to say that it instructs the town manager to send written notice.
Okay.
Because we're basically having the town manager act as our agent, and the board is formally voting that.
Gotcha. Motion for the board to instruct the town manager as the agent to move the recall petition forward that was submitted to the board today with the signature certified by the town clerk and the Board of Registars to formally recall Vanessa Alvarado.
So does the, I'm wondering the, kind of the move forward wording. I'm wondering if we're better off just being very simple here.
Okay.
The required action really is instructing Bob to send that note.
Okay.
I think I personally would prefer we make it just.
Can we get the language directly from the Charter in terms of what is required to be sent to the town officer? Let's just get that language directly.
Yes, I can pull that up, in fact. I had it linked before, but I took it away. Sorry.
I can make a suggestion.
Please.
Vote to instruct the town manager to send a new notice to Vanessa Alvarado as specified in Section 8.11.3 in the Charter.
What he said.
So 8.11.3.
I agree.
I'm in agreement as well. Does that work for others? Okay, so can you make that motion, Carlo, or refer to the motion that Bob just stated?
I refer the motion that town manager Bob LaShire just stated. 10, sorry.
Okay, do I have a second?
I would actually appreciate hearing it one more time.
Okay, if we'd like, why don't I?
Want me to try, Mark?
Yeah, I was going to ask, if you can hang on one second, I can work on it live.
Okay.
Give me one second here.
And then we can read it?
Exactly.
That's helpful. I always find this in town meeting, too. I always find it challenging to vote on things that are read out loud versus seen.
I agree, sorry.
Okay, Bob, please.
Vote to instruct the town manager to send to send a new notice to Vanessa Alvarado, which will restart the five-day period specified in Section 8.11.3 of the Charter. So that's taken right off of what Mark read earlier from Ray.
Great, I see that. It's coming great, straight from Ray's suggestion. That's good.
Okay, does that work for everybody?
Hi, this is Karen. You know, it seems a little overly complicated having a new notice and a restart, and I think simpler is better. The Charter says that the Select Board needs to be notified, and we are going to vote that we were notified this evening, and then we will be instructing the town manager to notify the subject of the recall petition. So I don't think we need to have that, the new and the restart in there. Just cross out new and cross out re in front of start. Ann, what do you think of that?
I'm okay with that. I think we could also, if we want to be very, you know, I think we've discussed this, but to send a notice to Vanessa Alvarado on April 2nd, 2020. You could say consistent with Section 8.11.3 of the Town Charter.
That's good. Thank you.
Carlo, before I do writing and crossing?
Can we have the number five, also parentheses, the word five, or just change it to five?
Whoops, sorry. Is that acceptable, everybody?
Do we want to say as agent of the Select Board, or on behalf of the Select Board?
That's a good idea. Yeah, I agree with that.
Good. Okay, it's actually, just a quick question. Bob, should it actually be move as opposed to vote?
Yes. When Carlo reads it, it should be yes.
Okay, Carlo, can I ask you to please read that?
Okay. Move to instruct the Town Manager, on behalf of the Select Board, to send a notice to Vanessa Alvarado on April 2nd, 2020, which will start the five-day period consistent with Section 8.11.3 of the Town Charter.
And a second, please?
Second.
Thanks, Karen. Any other discussion on this? All righty. Anne, how do you vote on this one? Karen?
Yes.
And Mark, yes. So we're 4-0. Okay, Anne, can I ask you to ask Vanessa to rejoin?
Yes.
Mark, thank you for keeping us all together tonight. You haven't deleted anyone yet. This is awesome.
Getting an unhappy internet sign on my side. I apologize.
Uh-oh. You've done such a great job, Mark.
Thank you. If Verizon sticks with me, we'll get through to the end. Okay, well, I don't think that we really need the slides anyway, so let me see. So are you folks seeing, you're seeing pictures of people? Okay, great, we're back. And Vanessa, I see you're back, thanks. So, two things really remain on the agenda at this point. I think public comment, and the last thing on the agenda would be topics for our, what I had is an April 14th meeting, but we'll come back to that in a moment. In terms of how we handle the public comment, I think we've done a pretty good job catching things as they come in. I've not been watching, but I believe that other board members have. Caitlin, perhaps you have as well. Do we want to try to address other comments that have come in, basically since the packet was issued? What I suggest is if there are lots and lots, and you guys can tell me the answer to that, then we may have to kind of more summarize, but if there aren't that many, perhaps we can even read some of them.
We went over a lot of them already, Mark.
Oh, great. Okay. Are there others that have just come in in the last few minutes?
I have one. If that's okay.
Please.
And I know it was addressed earlier. Does Bob have someone picked out for the EMD position already?
Bob, would you like to address?
Sure. That was, again, belt and suspenders from Town Council. There is already someone assigned to the position. That won't change. It's the Fire Chief Greg Burns.
Thank you.
Are there other comments that have come in that we should address here?
I think we covered most. If anyone else has anything they want to say.
Great, super. Why don't we move on then to next meeting? So I think the first issue is if we want to have a meeting next week and move on to a weekly posting. I think we, five of us talked about that and said that is what we want to do, correct? Okay, great. So, Bobby, we can ask you and Caitlin to get us posted on a weekly basis going forward for a while.
Yeah, if I could make a comment?
Please.
The reason I asked the board to meet on a Wednesday is because the thing is moving so fast that to put together a packet on Thursday versus Monday is a huge difference. So if the board's okay, if the focus of your meetings are going to be the COVID-19 situation, I'd ask you again to meet on a Wednesday night so we can respond Monday with an agenda with as much information as we can.
My perspective, that's fine. I thought others.
Good idea.
Wednesdays?
Yep, Wednesday, sounds great.
Okay, so the posting will be Monday afternoon for Wednesday.
Correct, Wednesday, the 8th.
Great, okay. And then just be aware of Patriots Day holiday.
Yeah, that's for the week after that. We'll have to make sure to post your 14th meeting quickly. I'll work with you on that, Mark.
Great, thanks, Bob. So, are there topics that we want to make sure that we're addressing? So obviously, the COVID-19 piece is the top of the activities here. Sorry, do I have it here? Right, okay. So, let me just come back for a second. On the 14th, I believe that's the date certain that we said we would have a continuation of the public hearing on parking. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. We need to have it there. I think we can talk about if there's going to be a way to accommodate that in terms of having a public hearing, if there's a good accessible path. I would suggest we do a couple of things. One is we can talk to some other towns to see how they're handling the situation, to see if we already have some best practices that are out there that might be helpful to us. I'd love to get more feedback from the community on how this worked. I'd love to get feedback from everyone who's on this call in terms of how they think that this worked as well. My impression is it seemed to work well. We got some public comment. If we're having a public hearing, that may not be the best approach to it. So I think we may want to think about how to get more engagement possible. What are the other members' thoughts on that?
Yeah, I think a lot of the public wants to, you know, whatever is going on, and, you know, whether it's thanking people or whether it's questions about what's been talked about tonight. I'm not, this is my first time on Zoom, so it's been great. Mark, you've done a great job. Everyone's done a great job. Phil, Bob, everyone's done a great job. And I think, I know, Mark, we talked offline about a chat feature, you know, with messages, and if that's a possibility. But as long as they identify themselves, I'm open to suggestions. I think things like this, and I'm very new at this myself. So I think what other towns have been doing, we should model that as best we can, but what else can we do?
Well, we may be leading here, too, to some extent. So we'll see. The one question I just gave to the board also is that there is a phenomenon that's taking place that is called Zoom bombing. And what happens is when you put out information on a Zoom call broadly, you can sometimes get people who, their interest is not in having a meeting take place. Their interest is in distraction and causing problems. And in my academic capacities, we've been restricted from allowing that to take place going forward in order to not have it happen. So I'm wide open to thinking about ways that we can do it. We certainly would ask people to identify themselves by name and address. There, we can think about ways to do that. I'd be happy to stay involved with trying to figure out how we can do more of an active basis for that. I think the one thing that we want to keep in mind also is that we have set aside in each of our meetings time for public comment. And in addition to that, during the discussion of certain items, we can allow for comment to come in also. And although I think email here may have been a little bit clunky, it may also have served a purpose. So we, I think we should think about other alternatives that can still allow for some kind of, I'm going to call it security, so that we don't have this Zoom bombing problem in our background. Let me stop. Other comments, please?
Clarification, this is Karen Herrick. Is the Zoom bombing something that happens if you use the Zoom chat feature?
It's actually when you put out more publicly the address for the meeting. So a lot of people can get it. It can be shared through social media in particular, and people who just happen to be cruising and looking to cause a problem, pick it up and use it.
Okay. My other thought on using the email tonight, and I agree it was a little clunky. The other thought is that people are sending in the emails and identifying themselves, but the people on the call and people listening in, we're not announcing who sent it in before we ask the question. So if we want to make it more as if a regular meeting were occurring, maybe we need to incorporate that in there. So they are identifying themselves, and on when their question gets asked, we also identify the source.
Very good. Other thoughts?
The email system, I think, worked well. We eliminate these bomb situation, and we could streamline it and keep it as a designated place in the meeting so that it's not interspersed the way we did it tonight, but a dedicated section where, to Karen's point, we also identify who the person was.
Right. And I think it actually is a very, it's a good control. I'm a little concerned that chat could be very distracting. I was able to, I think reasonably well, manage things tonight and chat box playing in the background. I don't think I could do it.
Yeah.
Good point.
If I might add, Mark, the board is faced with two different issues. One is general public comment, and then the other is comment directed at an agenda item. For comment directed at an agenda item such as this evening, I think the email feature with Karen's suggestions works okay. I do agree with Karen that just as if they were at a meeting, they should identify themselves by name and address. However, for general public comment, again, that's generally, if it's not on the agenda, it's not something the board will discuss. So I'm not sure what the advantage is in you reading out an email that you can't discuss. It'll be in your next packet. The only difference would be that the person doesn't get to have, you know, the issue described the same night. It waits for a week, but just to remind the board, if it's not on your agenda, you're not really supposed to discuss it.
Right, and that would hold true whether we were using email or chat, truthfully.
That's right. Oh, and I'm sorry, one more thing. There really isn't much of a best practice out there. There's one community, I think it was Middleton, that did have a public hearing of less than 20 people. It was a very concentrated issue, and it worked out fine. They used one of these technologies. I'm not sure if it was Zoom. There's 20 or 25 of us that communicate regularly by email, and no one else has had any experience with this, but all of them are wondering how to do it. Some of the legislation, I mentioned the term land use boards, but also more specifically, it does deal with public hearings and how to conduct public hearings. So I'm not sure that there's going to be any kind of a loosening up, but it would be helpful for us to wait for that legislation. So next week, we should know how to conduct a public hearing.
Great, so why don't we postpone until next week? Because our public hearing isn't scheduled till the 14th, anyway.
Right.
I think tonight, in terms of incorporating public comment, went pretty well and better than I had actually anticipated. I'm sure we may hear from people afterwards, and then we can try to respond to that feedback.
So why don't we ask people to, if they'd like to make suggestions, please send them in, and we can have this as one of our agenda items for next Wednesday? Does that work?
That's great. I like that.
Okay. Just thinking about what else we kind of had on the list. So the COVID-19 updates we talked about, the downtown parking hearing has to be on the 14th because that's when the date's certain that we set it for. So that meeting's going to have to be that Tuesday. Recall election was on here. I don't see any value in having that on next week. So I think we push that to the 14th. Ad hoc Human Rights Committee, an update. Is there a preference on when to do that? Should we put that on to the 7th? Sorry, is it the 8th?
Yes, 8th.
8th versus the 14th? Anne, do you have a preference on that?
I don't have a preference. I do need to still do some outreach to the school committee and the library board to confirm who they might be interested in having serve on that ad hoc committee in this upcoming year. So why don't I be in touch with you about how progress is going there? And if it makes sense to have it for next week, that's fine. I also think it's fine to have it on the 14th.
So what I would suggest also is that Bob and I can work together and look at some topics. I also very much take the point of if we're going to be meeting on a weekly basis, if we can have modest agendas for each of those meetings and still accomplish everything that we need to, that would be wonderful.
Yeah, yes.
So if there are other topics that board members would like to suggest, you can just send them into, I guess send them into Bob directly is probably the best way to do that, unless there are other things you'd like to bring up tonight to get on to the next agenda.
If I might ask, I know the board, under normal times, would have discussed liaison assignments. Once your boards start meeting again, I think that's a good topic to cover.
Great idea. So why don't we do that? I think that it should be, it's a discussion of how we want to do that, and then ideally actually establish them as well. So what we have established so far, though, is that Anne is working closely with the Board of Health as the singular liaison. You're assigned to RMLD.
Yes.
I think that's all we've set so far, and those were just based on time issues from our last meeting. Is that right? Okay, so Bob, I think that's a great idea. Let's make sure that's on there. Any other topics that members would like to make sure we have on the next agenda? You can bring it up now. You can send it across. Please send it over to Bob. Actually, I can send it to me and Bob. Is that right, Bob?
Yeah.
Yeah, send it to me and to Bob. That would be great. Okay, is any other comments or topics people, board members would like to bring up tonight? We're good. Okay, so let me just thank everyone for participation, for making this work. We're very open to getting feedback and comments and how we can improve this and make sure that we're accomplishing what you want us to accomplish. We're getting the input that you want to get to us. And with that, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Oh, sorry, Carlo, can I ask you to make the motion?
Motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second? Anne, you tried the second. Great. So we have to roll call. Sorry, Anne?
Yes.
Carlo?
Yes.
Karen?
Yes.
Vanessa?
Yes.
Mark? Yes. Thank you all. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. You did a great job.